I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'd like to start with roll call, starting with you, Chief.
Chief of Police, Brandon Pasquale.
Deputy Chief of Police, Phil Palaski.
Kelly Goff, Township Engineer.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kilkenny, Solicitor.
I'm kidding, Dennis DeSanto, Supervisor.
Aye, Sean Kilkenny, Solicitor.
Joe Givanas, Vice Chair.
Jamila Winder, Supervisor.
Kevin McDevitt, Supervisor.
Ashley DePiero, Chairwoman. I'd like to announce that we met for executive session to discuss matters of personnel litigation. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 27, 2021. Would anybody like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Vice Chair, Joe Givanas, Mr. Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. You step up to the podium, please, ma'am. And just start with your name and your address, please.
My name is Tony Jefferson. I live at 102 Dorp Circle. I'm calling, oh, excuse me, I'm stopping by to express a concern about a parked commercial vehicle that's parked in front of my house. And my understanding, there's an ordinance, I don't remember the number, that states that this vehicle should not be parked. And the police has advised the tenant that the township said that it is. It's an eyesore. I moved to this beautiful community not to have such a vehicle, you know, in my front door that I see every day when I'm walking in my house. And I need some help from the township to figure out, is it really permissible for commercial vehicles to be parked on our city streets?
Hi, everybody, good evening. I'm Rosemary Batzow with Dillon, and I live at 101 Dorp Circle. And I too am addressing the issue of this parked Wawa truck. It is a white panel truck, weighs about two ton. And it is parked in front of the residence at 104 Dorp Circle. There is parking on the property, and it is parked in our circle, which only has four homes. And I'm from East Norton, grew up in Colston. And Tony and Derek Jefferson are our neighbors. My husband's name is Mark, and we've lived here for 19 years. Tony has lived here for over 20-plus in the circle. We live in a beautiful area, as you know, East Norton's wonderful. And growing up here, I was well aware of the guidelines regarding commercial vehicles parked on residential streets. This isn't literally a, more than an eyesore, because it's actually closer to my drive, closer to my mailbox than to their driveway. And to look out this, and one of the issues is, I have a handicapped husband, and for him, he can only walk so far, and he sits on our breezeway. And it's there, it's there from 3:00 to the next morning and all weekend. The individual does have a personal truck, which is parked in the back of his driveway, which is rarely used. But it's just a major eyesore to have a Wawa truck parked in front of our homes. And we do appreciate everything Townsfolk does, by the way. Everything all of you do. The police and all of you, you've been, you've helped us tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to come back, but the one thing that was a concern was, this particular person was parking the truck in his driveway. And I happened to meet a builder who works in our community, and I was at his lot that was for sale, and I noticed that his sign was missing off of his vehicle. And his vehicle is parked on his property. And he told me that the township told him that he had to remove his sign because a commercial vehicle couldn't have signage on his property. And I said, well, that's really weird, because my neighbor is parking his Wawa truck in his driveway, and that would be the same. And he kind of expressed to me that he didn't want to, you know, fight with the township. He works in the township, and this was not a battle that he wanted to do, so he just took the sign down. And so now he doesn't have opportunity to show his sign when we get to see Wawa. And I just feel like, when the township, when the police department came over to his house, and no one from the police department really talked to me, you know, they went to that house, and they told him that it was okay. So then he reversed it. And so now he parks the Wawa truck on the street, and he puts his vehicle in the driveway. I'd rather see the vehicle than the Wawa truck. You know, and it just, it just concerns me, living in this community, that there's two rules. One for this other neighbor who doesn't want to fight, because he works in this community, and he doesn't want to, you know, be seen as a troublesome neighbor. And then this other person, who was parking it in his driveway, now wants to, because the police department validated his reasoning, that it was okay. So now he's parked in the street, and it's just really such an eyesore. So I think there's another neighbor who wants to talk about that.
Could I ask the address of the?
104 Dorp Circle.
10?
104 Dorp Circle.
Hi, my name's Larry Lancy, I live in 2722 Dorp. We moved to this area two years ago. My girlfriend and my mother moved here. Part of the reason why I moved here is because, pardon, we came from South Philadelphia, and the hellhole that we lived in cost our lives. And when we came out here, we see how beautiful it was, and how respectful everyone was of each other. And I feel it's a real violation that this government has decided to just stick his Wawa truck in our face and all the time. And also, I just wanted to throw a what-if out there. I have a real estate license. What if I decide to put a billboard in my front yard? And just to advertise my business, or any business? Or if anybody decided that they had a tractor trailer, and they were an overgrown trucker, and they wanted to park it on the street? Would we give them the same consideration that you're giving this guy? Well, I don't think that those things are fair to aggressive neighbors, that this eyesore has to be in our face every day. And I mean, I'm sure this guy's a nice guy, and he's doing what he thinks is right, but this open forum is a great place for us to express our opinion too. And let me tell you, just add one more thing, I love living here, all right? And I don't ever want to go back to where I came from, where you can't park, and you have to pay to park it, car in a garage somewhere. And I don't ever want to live, I intend to live here the rest of my life. And I certainly don't want to look at another eyesore if the gentleman across the street from me decides to park a tractor trailer or a big truck in front of my house. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you all. And we want you to continue to live in here for the rest of your life. Can you clarify some of the codes or regulations?
What I will do is, I can tell you, I know, I've heard about an issue over there. I don't know all the details, but I can assure you that I have your address, the address of the, of the house. I will be, along with, our chief will assign me, whether it's him or one of the staff, and our codes, and we will get an answer to this. I will find out all the details first thing tomorrow morning, and we will get the proper answer, whatever it may be. I don't know enough about it to give you anything tonight, but I assure you, we will tomorrow. And do we have any contact information?
We have a, I'm sorry, we have a report on it, and it has been before codes, police and, we're supposed to be working this out together. I don't know all the details in particular, but either, maybe we're familiar, like I said, with the complaint, the initial one.
But the concern, not to interrupt you, is that I've called the police a couple of times, and I would courtesy of me living in this community, no one has really, except this and so forth. And I know many from other things that I do in the community, has reached out to me to give me an answer. And the police department was very rude to me, and said that they only have Wawa on it. Is it valid on me? And I don't think that's something for them to make judgment on me, because I feel like, I don't like this commercial truck sitting there. And so I don't get a response from the police department. And I live here, and I pay taxes, and that, I think, is really a shame.
So I understand that, and if that's in fact what occurred, then I would have a problem with that as well. That's the first I'm hearing, that's the first I'm hearing, that version of the, of the events. So I said, if that's in fact what happened, I have a problem with that as well. That's how you left that contact with the office?
Well, I've seen him, I've been talking to him, and it seemed like a very fun, you know, joyful conversation, and then he moves his truck. No one has really, has reached out to me and gave me that same first.
Well, I can tell, let me say, I assure you, I'm sitting here for a reason. This is, we're all a team here, but I assure you that we will have an answer. I know Chief, he's kind of like I am, we know a little bit about this, but we need to follow up on it, and we will absolutely work together and come up and find the answer to this, and be in contact with you. I promise you that.
Can you just make sure that we get your contact information before you leave? That way, again, if you didn't make the initial report, maybe they were out there that, just to make sure we have the right contact information for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you guys coming to this meeting and expressing your concerns. That helps all of us as a team kind of get on the same page. So thank you. No, 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 and I didn't get that sense at all.
We understand.
No, completely, thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments by the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, I'd like to bring something up. It seems like over the last few years, and it's been going back a long time, but it seems to have gotten worse the last few years. Certain developments, every time a power, or every time a storm comes through, whether it's a winter storm or a summer storm, developments lose power. And they lose them for two, three, sometimes five days. And, you know, it, years ago, it didn't seem as bad. But today, it seems like every year, because, I don't know if it's global warming, I don't know what it is, but they're getting worse. You lose power in the winter, you lose power in the summer. And, you know, a lot of people, we have older residents, they can't afford generators. So I would like to talk to Bob about getting ahold of PICO, and see if something can be done, you know, to start. I know like Penn Square Village, their power's in the back, and I think a lot of the problems is with trees. And I think Colston has a lot of big trees too. Washington Crossing has a lot of trees. Marva Drive section, I think that's a big problem, is the trees. And you really don't see, like you used to see, PICO coming in and trimming the trees like, like we did years ago. So I'm wondering if you could address that issue?
We would gladly do that, and set up a meeting with the representative, Susan Ryan. I can tell you, I know, I think most of our communities experience the same type of issue. I think the storms are getting worse, it seems to be that way, but that, in my mind, PICO has to up their game.
Right.
And I'm not sure they've done that yet, so we will, we will be with them and absolutely share your concerns and our concerns.
Yeah, because it, it seems like it's always the same developments. And, you know, thank you.
Any other comments from, from the board?
Ashley, I have one, just, you know, it's the start of the school year, so we had, well, I'm no longer on the school board anymore, but Norris Founding School District had convocation yesterday. I heard it was very successful in terms of welcoming all teachers back to the school district, so I had an opportunity to see some of our teachers in the district yesterday. They had a meet and greet at Von C, which was a really nice event. So just, you know, want to wish our teachers, our students, best of luck as we start a new school year, and hopefully it's not as challenging as it was last school year. And just really proud of our district and our partnership with the district, so just wanted to wish everybody luck.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to Old Business. Ordinance number 592, the amended solicitation ordinance, Chapter 148, peddling and soliciting. I'd like to call on the township solicitor, Mr. Sean Kilkenny, to review this ordinance, please.
Thank you very much, Supervisor DePiero. What happened is, last, last month, we had a motion to advertise a new solicitation and peddling ordinance for East Norton Township. This was a reaction to a letter that we and many other townships in southeastern Pennsylvania received, talking about our prior ordinance being unconstitutional. As our office looked into it, and in fact, many of the claims made in the letter were correct. So what we have tonight here is a legal solicitation and peddling ordinance. And let me talk about what the township is doing proactively about peddling and solicitation. One of the things this ordinance does is establish a registry. So if you do not want to be part of someone knocking on your door, soliciting for business and such, you can go ahead and register on the township website. And then, when someone applies for a peddling and soliciting license, they're put on notice of houses they should not be going to. More than that, we'd ask you to display that, you know, at your door and such. I know you might have seen that in other houses. So that is what the township is doing proactively under the law, not necessarily to discourage peddling and soliciting, but making it manageable for residents. And the reason being is, one of the changes was based directly on a US Supreme Court decision, saying this, when we talk about hours. It shall be a violation of this chapter for any person to engage in peddling and soliciting before 10:00 AM or 9:00 PM. So it greatly increased the hours where someone can go ahead and solicit or peddle in the township, and that was not this Board of Supervisors doing. It's directly an opinion from the federal circuits and the US Supreme Court. We, as the Board of Supervisors and their legal advisor, you know, I don't want the township to get sued. So we're doing the best we can to go ahead and limit peddling and soliciting by having this registry, working with township staff, letting people to know that apply for a license, what houses they can't go to. But we need this cooperatively amongst the people here and those listening. You got to tell your neighbors about this, and go ahead and register if that's what you want to do. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Hart, if you have anything to add to that?
Well, just, I mean, you really basically said it all. But we, in the next, in the next, within the next two weeks, the database will be set up online. Also, we're also having decals that you can post on your door, your window, by your door, that says, you know, you're part of the registry and do not, you don't want to be solicited. So really, what this came down to is, the Supreme Court said that our solicitation ordinance and almost everyone's houses was too restrictive. That's really what it came down to, and has limited our ability to, to limit, to limit door-to-door solicitation. The one thing they allowed though was the registry of do not solicit. That's something we're working on, we will, and we're going to make a, there'll be a public education about that on social media, and then meetings, so people are aware of it and know it. If they want it, they can gladly easily get on the registry, have the sticker, and that will be a good start of getting control of this issue.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if there's going to be a social media post with a link, just to?
Oh, yeah. And that's our whole thing, because we really want to educate about it. The average person won't know this until they see it on Facebook or on the website. So there'll be, there'll be an educational piece about.
Okay, great. If you don't mind holding that comment until the end?
Yes, please.
Okay. So moving on to Old Business B. Oh, I'm sorry, we have, we have to make a motion. I'd like to entertain a motion for this.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, put in a motion by Supervisor, Supervisor DeSanto, seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right. Item B, Notice of Intent to Award the 2021 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Like to call on our Township Engineer, Ms. Kelly Goff, to review this item.
Thank you Supervisor Givanas. At tonight's meeting, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors issue a Notice of Intent to Award the 2021 Liquid Fuels Road Program to Miko Constructors. We received two bids on August 17. The total contract values of the two bids submitted were $645,330.45. The second one, the second lowest bidder was $709,284.10. The apparent low bidder appeared to not, I found discrepancies in the bid submitted by the apparent low bidder, so my recommendation is to reject their bid due to nonconformance with the bid documents. The second low bidder, I also reviewed their bid documents, and I found no discrepancies in their bids submitted. Therefore, I would recommend that you issue a Notice of Intent to Award to the second lowest bidder, Miko Constructors, in the amount of $709,284.10. So when you issue a Notice of Intent to Award at tonight's meeting, if you vote to issue this Notice of Intent, there will be a 30-day review period in order to ensure that the second low bidder can comply with your responsible contractor ordinance. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
I was just going to ask about the responsible contracting.
Yep.
Do we know if they comply?
It appears that they do comply. We still need to have that 30-day review period, though.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the award for 2021 Liquid Fuels Road Program.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Supervisor Jamila, all those, or, Supervisor Winder, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. EJ?
Oh, they told me F, sorry. Notice of Award Pot Shop Road Culvert Matting. I'd like to call on Township Engineer Kelly Goff to review this item.
Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. On July 26, we received a total of three bids for the Pot Shop Road Culvert Matting project. The three bids range in the prices from $79,950 to $228,839. At this time, I would recommend that you award the project to the low bidder in the amount of $79,950. The low bidder is CMR Construction, Inc.
Okay, any questions from the board? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Pot Shop Road Culvert Matting. Can anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Vice Chair, Mr. Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right, Item B, ESCO Release Number 1 Bradbury Point. I would like to call on Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you Supervisor Winder. For consideration this evening is ESCO Release Number 1 for Bradbury Point Development, located at 2311 Old Arch Road. Based on a recent inspection, all items in the request have been completed to the satisfaction of the Township Engineers' Office. It is therefore recommended the Board of Supervisors authorize ESCO Release Number 1 for Bradbury Point, in the amount of $63,677.65.
Any questions from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bradbury Point. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, ESCO Release on Number 2 Bradbury Point. Mr. Sullivan, you're up again.
Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. For all the reasons I just stated for ESCO Release Number 1, ESCO Release Number 2 is also in position for authorization to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. The amount of this ESCO Release is $64,266.98. And the reason there's two ESCO Releases at the same time is the developer had some trouble getting their paperwork together, so that's why we had two for the same project.
Any questions from the board? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve ESCO Release Number 2 for the Bradbury Point. Okay, thank you Supervisor DeSanto. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Number 2841, Authorization to Dispose of Equipment. I'd like to call on our Finance Director, Mr. Chris, to review this resolution, please.
Thank you Sheriff DePiero. In front of the board tonight is Resolution Number 2841, to approve, would authorize the Township Manager to dispose of, to sell, or other means of following this equipment. And in front of you is a list of various electronics items that are either no longer used by the township, in disrepair and unable to be repaired, or just, as I said, no longer in any type of use to the township. Things such as keyboards, mouse printers, printers that are 10 years old, things like that. So what we're asking for tonight is authorization to approve, approval of the resolution that would give us the authorization to dispose of this equipment. And I can authorize to state that the equipment that's on the list doesn't have any type of value that's associated with it.
And understand that this is very difficult for Mr. Chris. It took a lot of arm twisting to get him to get rid of his floppy disks, and it is our matrix printer. However, however we want, we want to.
I like floppy disks too. Any questions from the board? I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the disposal of equipment, Resolution Number 2841.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Item E, MS4 Presentation. Again, I'd like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Goff.
Thank you Vice Sheriff Givanas. Tonight, I will be going over your MS4 program here in East Norton, as well as some of the MS4 permit requirements of DEP. Next slide, thank you. So MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It is the conveyance system of stormwater within your township. This includes the inlets, the roads, your tributaries, your outlets, anything that's conveying storm sewer. This, I would not confuse your MS4 with your sanitary system. Your sanitary system takes water to the water treatment plant. Your storm sewer system takes it back to waterways. There's also a third system called a combined sewer system that would combine both the storm sewers and sanitary sewers. Next slide, please. I listed a few reasons why the MS4 system is regulated by DEP. Some of the goals of the regulations is to, are to minimize flood damage, maintain the streams, control contaminants in our water supply, and reduction in sewer rehabilitation and water treatment costs. Thank you. So your requirements under your DEP permit include six minimum control measures. Oh, sorry. So two of the minimum control measures include public education and involvement, and you, East Norton fulfills those requirements by having presentations like this, where we educate the public and the community leaders. You also have a lot of information on your website that can educate residents on how they can do their part to improve your waterways, and also how they can report illicit discharges. You also include educational information in your newsletters. Another MCM is the illicit discharge detection. East Norton fulfills this requirement by doing outfall screenings and mappings. You are required to inspect your outfalls, and if there's an illicit discharge coming out of the outfall, you're required to take a sample and test it for any contaminants. Another MCM is the construction site stormwater runoff control. You fulfill this requirement through your regular permitting process and inspections. Inspectors are out there making sure contractors are keeping their sediment on their site. Next slide, please. The next MCM, or minimum control measure, is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. East Norton will, fulfills this requirement by maintaining their township vehicles and their stormwater control facilities. Next slide. I wanted to present some resident tips. Don't put your litter and debris on the trap, and on the, anywhere besides your trashcan. Recycle your pet care, make sure you pick up after your pet, because if there, there's bacteria that can come from their waste and enter into the waterways. Also, please maintain your vehicles, because any vehicle fluid that comes out of your car, or any car washing fluids that come out of your, come from your car, they could end up right in our waterways. Next slide, please. Some more resident tips. Maintain your lawn. Don't put your grass clippings in the street. Rain barrels are a great way to harvest rainwater and just reduce the overall runoff from your property. And if you do see any illicit discharges, please report them. There's information on how you can There's information on how you can report them on the East Norton Township website. Thank you. So under your permit, you're required to implement various projects that will reduce your, your sediment loading. One of your projects that you're implementing is your regular street sweeping. Next slide, please. Another project that you'll be implementing is retrofitting your basins, and East Norton Township did receive grant funding to retrofit two of the basins within the township. So we are working with DEP on, in order to fill, fulfill the requirements for retrofitting those basins. Next slide. Another BMP that's proposed in your pollution reduction plan is the Heroes Park Basin. This will also improve stormwater quality, and East Norton Township applied for funding for this project back in the spring as well. So if you have any questions, I just have a little joke down there. Rain doesn't fall, raindrops. So anyways, if you have any questions, please ask.
I love quotes. Any questions from the board? Thank you for that presentation. Moving on to new business. Mr. DeSanto.
Sorry. I'm sorry. On Friday's actions, solicitor to a rate increase, I'd like to call on Township Manager Robert Hart. Thank you Supervisor DeSanto. DeSanto, Jesus.
It's okay.
So I'm reading what I said, so. So many of you have received a letter in mail from Aqua, Pennsylvania, mentioning that if, and that could win all over the state, because some people have their water with Aqua. East Norton doesn't. They have it with American Water. But the store, the sewer system is through Aqua, and we, many of you got a message in the mail today saying they are going in front of the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, to get a rate increase for their entire state. So it's what they'll raise their rates, and it's handled by a state agency. So they have to go in there and put a case on. It takes anywhere from six months to a year and a half, and they have to convince them that what they're doing is needed and called for, and in certain parameters. In East Norton, so East Norton in 2020 sold the sewer system, as many of you know, to Aqua. I know many people, I got a couple calls today, people thinking that their rates were going up tomorrow. Part of the sale to Aqua, they are, if they pass the rate increase today, now they're not going to pass, if they, whatever rate increase they get will be somewhere in 2022, maybe the end, mid, or end of 2022. But even if they pass it today, it would not affect East Norton, because part of the sale, there was a two-year window where their rates are frozen. So up until June 20th, 2022, so just short of a year. It doesn't matter what they do, they can't change the rates in East Norton. After that, whatever the PUC approves for them is what they'll put in place. They'll ask for the move and work, and they go through hearings and everything under the sun, and then the PUC will work down and see what, what they finally agree on, what they finally approve. We knew when we sold it that, we even said to Aqua, that we, as a township, will monitor at all times and fight if we think that an increase is anything but reasonable and justified for what it does, and for the, you know, redoing all the infrastructure of the ground. So before you tonight is a authorization to send a solicitor to the PUC hearing to oppose any unreasonable or unjustified, or any inflated rate increases. That being said, on the backside of it is, I saw on Facebook a couple, a couple people who, not everybody, we had, we had meetings for residents here, and we know, everyone's busy, so, you know, we had nice crowds, but we didn't have, you know, a lot of people didn't, weren't able to make it. When people were tied, the gentleman called me and said, oh, okay. Well, once I explained it to him, he said, well, my, my rate may blow up at the end of next year. And I said, with the PUC, it probably will. And they said, well, why don't you sell it? I said, if we didn't sell it, it would have went up much higher, and it would have went up higher than what the PUC did. We did a study of all of our infrastructure in the ground, and for decades, East Norton Township in the past did not, they neglected the infrastructure in the ground. Our study said, within the next approximately 15 years, we'd need $40 million of improvements, rip up, rip up the old pipes in the ground, and put new ones in, and new systems and new pump stations. DEP was required in that and many more. So in the meantime, while you're doing all these $40 million, DEP would be fining us for everything that wasn't in place. So when we put, at those meetings for people who weren't there, we put it on the, I can tell you, this board or staff didn't really care what plan, keep it or sell it. It was what made sense. And what made sense on it was, we're not in that business. We don't, we don't, we have to have contracts. We don't, we're not in that business. Aqua's in that business. It's much different for them when they do projects that connect Plymouth, East Norton, Northtown, and they do them in Boulder. So it made a lot of sense in that respect. And at the end of the day, they are limited in their increases by the state. The PUC monitors and authorizes any increase. So once I explained it, he fully understood it, but I do understand that people are busy. And when we had all those meetings here, not everybody was able to make it, or fully, and when you just write something down and you read, it's, the context isn't there, and it's more difficult to understand at times. But the reality is, that's where it is. Whenever this rate increase comes, if we hadn't sold it, this increase a little higher, and we presented, would have been made last year, in early 2020, and we weren't there, potentially in 2019, that's how far back. So again, that's just giving a little context, but we might as well. The motion for you tonight is to authorize us to go to that PUC here, make them justify everything that they're saying, and make it be true, and whatever increase goes in there is the minimal increase that makes sense to pay for anything that's upgraded, not just to, not for profit sake. So that's what the before you tonight.
Thank you for explaining that detail. Any questions from the board?
If I may, just have a comment. This, the letter from, from Aqua exploded on social media, and I've said before in these meetings that you hate to give life to social media, but it's a part of our lives now, especially with COVID, everybody's on their devices, and you don't really get to see each other. One of the things that came up on the, on the threads were, what are they doing with the money from the sale? Thank you so much to the Board of Supervisors for screwing us. I want everyone to know that I'm wearing the same shoes I wore before we sold the sewer system, because I didn't get any money. None of us got money for selling the sewer system. It really, you know, people have said that it was our, the township's last asset was the sewer system. It was the last revenue generating thing that we had, let me assure you, and the hundreds of thousands of you that are watching us on Facebook Live right now, it was not an asset. And no one on this dais, and no one sitting in this room screwed anybody. I take personal offense to it for my colleagues and for myself. We didn't sneak it by. We had the meetings. It was an informed decision. And this item before us is, as Mr. Hart said, sending the solicitor to fight an unjust, if it is unjust, increase. So I just wanted to make that point, that we did not swindle anyone or take an asset away that we would have otherwise had. So thank you so much.
If I can add just to Supervisor DeSanto, when we had them up, and we had, we had a plan for the screen, if we sold it, or if we kept it and everything was involved, I can tell you, 300 people, 99 people said, okay, it makes sense, that's where we were. This wasn't just arbitrary, it was well thought out, it was three years in the making, and it made sense. And as far as, I know that came up about what you're doing with the proceeds. First of all, there are so many needs in a township. But second, that will be coming up for the board in the fall. I know the board, for anyone who's listening, the board, the township has not raised taxes since 2009. That can't go on forever in most places, right? That's kind of unique. The board has instructed staff, we've been working on it, we're bringing it out, one of the things that's going to be done is a tax stabilization account, where some of the money is going to offset any tax increase. We're hoping for the next 10 or 20 years, because we don't want to add to the burden that you're already facing. We know there are, there are a lot of competing, there's county, there's state, there's federal. Our school district always needs funds, because they're constant, they're growing, and they have a lot of unfunded mandates that, that come down, and we know that from the state. So understand, we have, we're working on a plan, there's a lot of really positive things. We're putting money back into infrastructure. If you know our streets, we're doing, we used to do road programs that were very minor or limited. We've expanded them five, sixfold at this point, putting in new curves, and we're working our way through. They've been neglected, but I know, I'm working with this board, they will be neglected no more. So we're looking to, to take care of the base, the infrastructure that makes sense, and really, that, you know, we put in these different parks, and these different things, and really unique items that make East Norton a place, not only do you want to stay where you want to live, and the gentleman said here, where he came from in South Philly, who loves it here, we're trying to make it where, not only do you want to stay here, but families want to come here and pick and choose East Norton. And that's why we've done these types of things, and we'll continue to stay tuned, there's a lot of good things coming, and we're going to continue to do that, because we're trying to look, this board has made, known to me dozens of times, they're worried about your home values. The best way I can, this staff can make your home values stay high and go higher, is to make people want to come here, to have the amenities and the infrastructure that really allows people and draws families. So I just wanted to understand, that's where we come from with our, with our thoughts, and I know the board has directed us numerous times to continue that, that mission, and that's what we're going to do.
Well said. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Did you vote?
Nope. I'd like to put in a motion to authorize Solicitor Mr. Kilkeny to oppose the rate increase. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Supervisor Winder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Item G, Monthly Expenditures. I'd like to call on Mr. Chris to review them with us.
Thank you Supervisor Winder. Presenting to you tonight are the township expenditures for the month, and by now, I think you realize that when we talk about those monthly expenditures, they're actually our expenditures from the date of our last meeting to the date of this meeting. Those expenditures for that time period total $721,309.47. Our accounts payable expenditures, and those are typical payments for utilities, supplies, professional services. They total $30842.25. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, payroll, taxes, et cetera, were $420,467.22. So Township Staff is asking for the board's approval tonight of those expenditures, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the monthly expenditures.
I'll make that a form of a motion.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor McDevitt. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Mr. Givanas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Other business. Managers update?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make this brief. Just wanted to comment on our Community Day, which is coming up on September 11. You may have seen some things on Facebook about that as well, but it really is going to be a fabulous event. We put a lot of time, or really, our Parks and Recreation Department is really devoted to it, but it's really a team effort. We have large meetings with just about everybody in it, because it's such a large event, that we really need all hands on deck, and we've been lucky to have great weather, and really put off, pulled off some fabulous dates. You'll see this year, we're really going to go beyond to, it's, first of all, it's the 20th anniversary of 9/11 tragedy. We're going to have a ceremony to start the event. We're a very respectful ceremony. We really have all our first responders as part of it, and our veterans groups. We're looking forward to a very unique, but moving tribute in the world to start the day. And then, like I think we all believe we should, we've come together afterwards, in togetherness and resiliency, and we're having a great day together, with our families, our children, at a great Community Day. We have a lot of attractions that we haven't had in the past, so stay tuned for that. We have, not only our beer garden, which was extremely successful all the last time, we've added a wine garden from Ennisburg Winery. We have everything else, and you know, we have fireworks at the end of the night to end the event, bands on our stage, so it is going to be a fabulous day. Lots of surprises, I don't want to necessarily tell at this point, but we're continuing to work, but really, most importantly, with all of that good stuff, we are well aware that we're in a panic at this point, and that we're facing these challenges. We have elicited and solicited health officers that are going to be walking around with masks and giving free masks, and sign the positive information from our little pharmacies with, for vaccine information and availability. We're going to be doing all that as a group. We're going to encourage masks, of course. We're going to encourage everything we can, distancing when appropriate. It is an outside event. We are following the CDC and the mechanical health guidelines as best we can, because it's a fluid situation. If things happen to change in a more serious manner between now and then, we will deal with that. It hasn't been big. But in the meantime, I can assure you, we're going to do everything we can to keep everyone safe, and at the same time, give some, give, give us all a chance to celebrate and be together in the safest way we can, and really enjoy a day and celebrate the end of a really great summer. So stay tuned, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Citizens, be heard. Do you want? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I have two questions, I guess, to Mr. Kilkeny concerning the soliciting. I don't care what the answer is, I just want clarification. Door hangers, can they be put on doors at any time, or is there a restriction on that?
Door hangers?
Politically?
You're not talking about? Anything as far as political speech goes doesn't fall under the solicitation order, or religious speech?
Oh, so in other words, if a person has a do not solicit, and you're campaigning, that's okay?
It does not apply, it's protected by the U.S. Supreme Court, your rights are.
Okay. And now I was talking about people selling burglar arms, or driveways, or something like that. Could they put a door hanger on there and walk away?
I personally do not think that that's going to be a priority of, of code, to be enforcing someone leaving a door hanger. I think what it's going to be is people knocking on the door.
Okay. Good. And the other comment I have is to Kevin, thank you very much. Our community over there, everybody knows about St. Titus. I've had some residents who've moved out and moved in, and the people that moved out said the only complaint they had about East Norton is, every time we have a storm, we lose power. And this last one was five days for us. So please include us on your list of.
Yeah. And it seems like it's gotten worse.
I, it's.
I mean, over, I've been in the township for over 35 years, and it just seems like it's constant now. Before, you'd get it maybe once a year, maybe once every three years, but now it's like three or four times a year, you're getting power out of it.
I have, I have neighbors up the street from me who have negotiated to buy the generator that kicks off automatically, and this last time was the first time that I had to go out and get a generator myself.
Right. And that's great. Right. And that's great you can do that, you know, but there's a lot of residents, we have a lot of elderly residents that they can't afford generators, you know, and they're, they're kind of stuck.
I had one neighbor who complained that when he drove through the neighborhood, all he could hear was the generators that he had to, he couldn't get a good night's sleep, but I told him, get a room. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
If I can give you one example, Mr. Sullivan, for many years, would tell me, when we had a storm, they were called a hundred-year storm. That's, that's a term, and, you know, it truly mattered. It reached certain levels, happened once in a hundred years. When we started having two and three a year, I told him not to talk. It reached certain levels, happened once in a hundred years. When we started having two and three a year, I told him not to talk. I haven't said it since.
It's like the three month, three-month storm.
And that's a true story.
Any other citizens to be heard? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Regarding the storm, I just want to thank the police and especially the road crews as well, just as much. Because of great deals for damage, okay, and right, it seemed to swathe right through from our place right through St. Titus area too, as you well know. But the response was phenomenal. And we really greatly appreciate that, okay? And what you're doing for the residents who lose their power, it's great. We have underlying power lines. So a couple of us didn't lose our power. So we share our refrigerators and freezers. So anyway, I thank you all for listening and thank you for taking our issue seriously. And thank you for continuing to be here for all of us.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. Any other citizens to be heard? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meet, tonight's meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Santo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.